Oh, thank you. Welcome to the January 8th meeting of the Aiken City Council. At this time, we'll call to order, we'll have our invocation by Mr. Charles Matthews with Second Baptist Church, which will be followed by our invocation, I mean, followed by our pledge from our chief. So, Mr. Matthews, if you're with us at this time.
We just want to thank you for this day that you have made and have allowed us to walk through it with no harm, hurt, or danger coming upon us. We thank you, God, for the achievements that this great city has made throughout the year 2017. And, God, as we embrace 2018, as we take upon this journey, we ask that you bless the minds of the city officials. We ask that you allow them to look deep in their spirits as they make challenging decisions. Let them make decisions based on your mercy, your grace, as well as your love. God, we thank you for all the people that are here under the sound of my voice. We ask that you continue to give us a mind, as well as a heart, to disagree and love, especially on those decisions that we have so challenging for this great city. But also, God, help us to realize that this city is not great because of anything that we may do or say, but it's because of your mercy, as well as your grace. We lift up our mayor and ask that you continue to guide him and lead him with wisdom and knowledge. But not only that, God, help us to remind ourselves that it is because of you that we are the people that we are. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Charles. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a full agenda, and I've been reminded by more than one person that there may be an event on TV that some folks want to get home to tonight. So, we will try to operate as quickly but as efficient as we can. I'd like to read the guidelines of our meetings. These are important to keep our meetings orderly. Meetings are public forums in which many opinions are expressed, and the business of the city must be conducted. As such, disciplined, honorable, and professional decorum is paramount. Courteous and respectful communication is expected. During public hearings, all questions and statements from the public shall be directed to the chair. If you wish to speak, raise your hand, and I will certainly recognize you. Please approach the podium and state your name and address. In order to allow an opportunity for everyone who wishes to address council, speakers should limit their comments to the subject being discussed. Each speaker will be given five minutes to address an issue and may only address an issue once unless questions from council are posed to that speaker. So, we appreciate your cooperation in following our guidelines. Before we start, I would like to recognize a guest that we have, and that's Mayor Fred Kavanoff is with us tonight, and his wife, Lee. So, Mayor, we appreciate that guidance. With that, I would like to recognize our Mayor Pro Tem, Ms. Gail Diggs. For additions or deletions to the agenda, Mayor Pro Tem?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? With their being done, I make a motion that we approve the agenda as is.
Thank you very much. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. The minutes were distributed to council members for their review before the meeting. Is there a motion for the acceptance of the minutes?
Several, Mr. Mayor, that we adopt.
Okay. Councilwoman Price, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilman Jared O. Any corrections to be cited at this time? Okay. Hearing none. All those in the favor of the minutes as presented? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to the portion of our agenda, presentations. Number one, I'll recognize Councilwoman Price.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. We have with presentation, recognition of our mayor, Mayor Osborne. The Municipal Association of South Carolina has an 18-member board of directors composed of both elected and appointed officials. These board members set policy for the association. At a recent meeting, Mayor Osborne was appointed to the Board of Directors of the Municipal Association of South Carolina to fill an unexpired term. His position represents an at-large appointment. We have, do you want me to announce that, or you want to do that with our new president?
Sure. Absolutely. I mean, we have Wayne-
We have. Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. We have Wayne George here. He's the new executive director for the Municipal Association. And Wayne, we appreciate you being with us. He's in his second week of the job, so we in Aiken appreciate you taking time to be here, but also, I think it shows the importance of Aiken to our state and to our organization. So, this time, I'd certainly welcome you up, Wayne. I'll just say while he's coming, Wayne is a former mayor of the city of Mullins, has actually served, I believe, two terms in the South Carolina State House. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, we appreciate all you've done for our state and our association, and look forward to great things under your leadership.
Thank you, Mayor. And as Councilmember Price said, we welcome you to our board. She said there's 18 board members across the state, and on behalf of Mayor Lee Sparten, who is the mayor of Casey, we welcome you to our board. Aiken has, for years, had many strong leaders come out of this city council. I know Lessie was a past president, I think, in maybe the mid-'90s. We're telling our age here, aren't we? Mayor Cravatna was a past president. So, whether it's city managers, city council members, or mayors, this city has been a strong supporter of the Municipal Association for a long time. And under your leadership, Mayor Osborne, we look forward to you serving on our board. You were elected at our December meeting, actually before I was appointed. So, with that, we look forward to having you with us. In closing, I think I'd be remiss not to mention that I did have the opportunity to serve with several of the legislators here, Representative Clyburn, and Hickson, Bill Taylor, and, of course, Don Wells, who's served on your council here for many years. And you're well-represented in Columbia. We don't always agree, but the legislature starts tomorrow, and I know we'll be calling on you to call on your colleagues that represent Aiken and Aiken County and the surrounding area. We need your help. There's important legislation that will affect municipalities this year, and we want what's good for Aiken, but also what's good for our great state. Again, welcome to the board, Mayor. We're glad to have you, and I look forward to seeing you at our February meeting.
Absolutely.
Thank all of you for what you do.
And Wayne, before you go, you made all the effort of coming down here. I want to come around and present something to you. It wouldn't be a council meeting if we weren't presenting things, right?
Mayor, if I can, can I add a few more comments? Mayor George represents 271 cities. We just added one with the state of South Carolina, and his board, of which our mayor is serving on, is part of that body that helps to establish policy for a lot of these 271 cities in the state of South Carolina. So, got an awesome job, both of you. Great job, too.
You have a great city here. I tell you, it's beautiful. I've been through it many occasions, had lunch here, dinner, spent the night here, and I know you're very proud of your city. It's a wonderful city.
Well, first of all, we hope you continue to support our economy. Thank you. Just remember our city invited this visit and congratulate you on the new position. I know under your leadership, it's going to flourish and continue to do well. Just a little something about Aiken. This is our fountain. If you go to the corner of Lawrence and Park, you'll see this, but hopefully, when you see this, you'll think of us here.
I will. I'll put this in my new office.
Absolutely. I look forward to seeing you there many times. Thank you for coming in. Moving down to number 200 presentations, this is a recognition of our senior commission for receiving the 2017 Positive Images in Aging Award for South Carolina, and I think Jessica's here, maybe she was.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On December 11th, the Southeastern Association of Area Agencies on Aging in Greenville, the city of Aiken Senior Commission was recognized as the winner of the 2017 Positive Images in Aging Award for the entire state. This award recognizes a group, agency, or business who has presented a positive image of older adults. The senior commission was recognized for its partnership with several agencies across the aging network to host a family caregiver appreciation luncheon earlier this spring. The purpose of the luncheon was to thank the Lower Savannah area caregivers for everything they do on a day-in and day-out basis to help their loved ones age in place. We have Jessica Campbell here with members of the senior commission for this presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Jessica.
Good evening. I'm delighted to work with our senior commission. One of their vision is to be recognized, for Aiken to be recognized, as a leader in the state for providing an attractive and accommodating community for all stages of seniors. And here we are, awarding, they've been awarded with the Southeastern Association, so not only the state, but the entire southeast, recognized as a winner of the 2017 Positive Images of Aging. I'd like to bring those commissioners that are here today up and give them a round of applause. We have Ms. Linda Lucas, our chair, and Ms. Mary Beth Fields, Ms. Elizabeth Neal, I believe, Ms. Karen Potite, and Mr. William Price.
We do have the award we want to present to you, but before I go down, I just want to say thank you. This commission works hard and does a great job for our community, and really represents us well. And what an amazing award. I look forward to this. It's Positive Images in Aging Award presented to the city of Aiken Senior Commission, Aiken, South Carolina, in recognition of your presentation of a positive image of older adults, Southeastern Association of Area Agencies on Aging, Greenville, South Carolina. So, thank you, guys, so much. We're so proud of this, and it represents a lot of work on your part, and we know that. So, I want to come down and present this at this time if we could.
You had to turn around.
human trafficking in Aiken. Comments from staff?
Mr. Mayor, our executive director of the Cumbi Center, Susan Seldon, has asked to make a presentation regarding Human Trafficking Awareness Month. She's also requesting permission to place a life-size silhouette display in the downtown area with information on human trafficking. The request is to place the display at the crosswalk area on Park in Lawrence Street during the month of January. For council consideration, as a request for permission to place a life-size silhouette display on Park Ave. at Lawrence Street to inform our community of the issues with human trafficking. Good evening.
Hey, Susan, welcome.
Thank you. Just to share a little bit about human trafficking, it's defined as modern-day slavery, and it's the recruitment, harboring, transporting, providing, or obtaining a person for a commercial sex act, in which a sex act is induced by force, fraud, or coercion, or in which the person has not yet attained at the age of 18 years old. And then, there's also labor trafficking, which is when the person is subjected to involuntary servitude, debt bondage of slavery, through the use of force, fraud, and coercion. This is a human rights violation, and it robs people of their dignity and their freedom. And as the fastest-growing crime in our nation, it threatens our public safety and our national security. To quote Attorney General Allen Wilson, "To turn the tide on trafficking, we must be able to define it, recognize it when it's happening, and know who to call when we see it." And the reason I bring this to your attention is we in Aiken are seeing more human trafficking. I know our public safety officers are seeing it. The Cumbi Center victim advocates are seeing this happen, and so, we are very concerned about making sure our community is educated about the issues and the impact. It's crucial that we in Aiken know how traffickers are targeting our school-aged children, how they're exploiting the vulnerabilities of different people, such as their cultural, economic, and cultural, social disparities, and how they prey on those who lack security and the opportunities that most of us would take for granted. So, on behalf of the Cumbi Center, I'd like to request permission to put up the display that our city manager has just mentioned.
Susan, thank you so much, and obviously, thank you for what the Cumbi Center does and the needs that they meet in this community. At this time, is there a motion to approve the request from the Cumbi Center?
I move.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Of course, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Moving down to that portion of our agenda, old business. Number one is discussion of appointees to various city boards, commissions, and committees. Comments from staff?
Mr. Mayor, the council has 15 pending appointments to fill vacancies on different city boards, commissions, and committees. No appointments are presented for council's consideration and vote at the meeting tonight. For your information, we have received letters of resignation from Mr. Pat Pertenetti for the Board of Zoning Appeals, and from Keith Wood, resigning from the Election Commission as well.
At this time, we'll open it up for council members to make new appointments.
Mr. Mayor, for the Election Commission, we just heard that Keith Wood has resigned. We have copies here. Can we, I'd like to recommend that we consider John Lindsay. John is an attorney, a then-retired consultant for a position of the Election Commission for service.
Very good. Any other names for consideration at this time?
I would like to place for Board of Zoning Appeals, Karen Daly, and for General Aviation Commission, Graham Reynolds.
Okay. Councilman Jared O. Any other names at this time? Those names will be considered our next meeting. Thank you. Moving down, old business, number two. This is a request to spend capital project sales tax money for Hitchcock Woods Stormwater Project. I'd recognize Councilman Ed Walz to make the motion.
Want a motion at this point? Take a motion to approve it.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I could say something? I think that Woods has given a lot to this city over the years. I think it's an integral part of this city. It's used quite often, and I think this is one of the ways the city can pay back for some of the use. We've gotten out of Woods now.
Very, very good. Very good. Thank you, Councilman Walz. Comments from staff?
Mr. Mayor, as all of us know, in July of 2016, you appointed a Hitchcock Woods Stormwater Task Force that began meeting to attempt to resolve the longstanding problem of stormwater erosion of the Sand River Basin. The task force consisted of then-council members Ebner and Humoki, citizens with particular expertise in the area, and members of the Hitchcock Woods Foundation. In December 2016, the city council unanimously approved a contract with McCormick-Taylor to develop an implementation plan to mitigate damage in the Sand River Basin. We currently have over $5.2 million available to implement a first phase of the project. By beginning mitigation, this will enable the city, through our consultant and the foundation, to apply for additional grants to continue efforts to address the stormwater erosion in the Sand River Basin. This will include money from stormwater retention on Hitchcock Woods property, which is unanimously supported by the Hitchcock Woods Foundation, as stated in the letter attached to the agenda item. So, for approval, is a request to spend capital sales tax money for the first phase of the Hitchcock Woods Stormwater Project. And I know, Mr. Mayor, that some members of your task force are present, as are members representing the Hitchcock Woods Foundation, and our consultants, who are there that could answer any technical questions that you may have.
Very good. Very good. All right. At this time, we're going to open up the floor for comments. I realize that comments and opinions will vary on this, but this is an opportunity for Aiken to show that we can disagree without being, or disagree without being disagreeable. So, even though our opinions may vary, we're going to show good decorum during this time. So, I open up the floor for comments at this time on this issue. Pat, would you like to, I know you're the chair of the foundation, if you'd like to say a word?
I'd be happy to.
Appreciate you being here and the supporters that you have here.
I'd be happy to.
Pat is right here.
I just wanted to say that I think the issue, the topic of the stormwater discharge into the Hitchcock Woods from the city streets has been a topic for a very long time, as many of you on this council are painfully aware of, and I think many of our supporters are also extremely aware of. And I think the genesis of that came, started, you know, way back in the 1950s, and it was just an easy discussion at that particular time, because the city of Aiken had a lot of trees, it was not very developed, it had not a lot of roofs, and not a lot of hardscape roads. And as time grew, and as the discussion grew, more complicated as expansion in the city took place, and as more stormwater was discharged into the woods, and as more damage happened to the woods. And it became quite complicated over the last 30 years. And during that time, I think we've had, I don't know, Stuart and Jason, we've had, what, about 20 studies? 20-some-odd studies for the fact, over those years. And those studies have given us some background, but they haven't yielded an awful lot of solutions. And I believe the genesis of our particular issue today sort of started back in January in 2016, when the foundation went to see Mr. Clem. And we said, you know, the damage has reached a level in the woods that is unsustainable. And we really have got to find a way to start to mitigate the damage. And, but we want to assure the city, that the foundation wants to assure the city, that we want to do this in a reasonable, realistic way, to ensure that there is a solution, a workable solution, a fixable solution, that is going to be easy for, as easy as possible, and cost-effective for the city to be able to implement, but at least it gets done. And because of that, the mayor, as Mr. Clem, as our city manager said, started the task force back in July of 2016. And we met several times, and it was a very, very good task force, but out of that task force, there was a unanimous vote to hire a stormwater consultant, because these studies were getting very complicated, and it was really hard for us to understand, we needed expertise. And we unanimously hired, you all unanimously hired, McCormick-Taylor. And frankly, they hit it out of the park. It is the first time that a stormwater consultant has come up with an actual solution, a solution, if you will, that fixes the problem, and presented a common sense approach to truly achieving a workable solution, and that benefits not only, not only mitigates the damage to the Hitchcock Woods, but benefits the city and the taxpayers. And in the way that it benefits the city and the taxpayers is the plan is in four phases. The city, this city council is able to vote on each phase, they're able to evaluate each phase, they are able to change, monitor, whatever they need to do. As our consultant said, the plan, really, it's a living document, but it's a roadmap of where we're going. But the first two phases, as they have put the plan together, is completely paid for. It doesn't go to, not one penny comes out of the taxpayer base, because it's from money that was referendum money back in 2006 and 2010. And that was to be earmarked for the specific reason to address the drainage of the stormwater going into the Hitchcock Woods. These two phases will take care of approximately 42% of the volume, which is causing the problem, so that not a penny is going to be wasted, as so much money has been wasted in the past because of studies that happened over and over and over again. That also probably will take about three or four or five years to complete those first two phases, and it's a four-phase plan. But that's going to give, where it benefits the city, is that is going to give the city time to consider and find alternate funding, which they're going to be entitled to, which they're not entitled to now, because they've taken a first step to have a stormwater management plan brought up to date and in compliance. And it also, because Hitchcock Woods has agreed to be a partner in this, we have agreed to house 50%, approximately 50% of the volume that is going to happen in the last two phases. And we also have offered to help with alternate funding and finding funding that the city would not otherwise be entitled to. And the reason that we are able to do that, because the Hitchcock Woods is not just private property, it is a state and national heritage site, and it is potentially a world heritage site, if we keep our fingers crossed going forward, which is going to be a huge benefit to the city of Aiken. It also has a conservation easement because of its archaeological treasures and its scientific and natural treasures. We have a conservation easement, a very strict one, that is held by the Department of Natural Resources on the property. And that opens up a wealth of alternate funding to the city and to the taxpayers that the city has not been entitled to before. And so, on that note, I would like to thank very much the city administration for taking the leadership in getting this issue to this point. I would like to thank the council very much for agreeing to hear it once again. It's like that bad- But that's going to give, where it benefits the city, is that is going to give the city time to consider and find alternate funding, which they're going to be entitled to, which they're not entitled to now, because they've taken a first step to have a stormwater management plan brought up to date and in compliance. And it also, because this Hitchcock Woods has agreed to be, to be a partner in this, we have agreed to house 50%, approximately 50% of the volume that is going to happen in the last two phases. And we also have offered to help with alternate funding and finding funding that the city would not otherwise be entitled to. And the reason that we are able to do that, because the Hitchcock Woods is not just private property, it is a state and national heritage site, and it is potentially a world heritage site, if we keep our fingers crossed going forward, which is going to be a huge benefit to the city of Aiken. It also has a conservation easement because of its archaeological treasures and its scientific and natural treasures. We have a conservation easement, a very strict one, that is held by the Department of Natural Resources on the property. And that opens up a wealth of alternate funding to the city and to the taxpayers that the city has not been entitled to before. And so on that note, I would like to thank very much the city administration for taking the leadership in getting this issue to this point. I would like to thank the council very much for agreeing to hear it once again. It's like that bad penny, it just keeps turning up. And the effort that they've been, they've gotten into to really understand, I'd like to thank them for hiring this consultant in the first place, who has just done a bang-up job, not only for mitigating and attacking the problem at hand, but for the benefit that it's going to be giving the city and the Hitchcock Foundation. And I'd also would like to thank all our supporters that are here tonight. It means a lot to us, it really does.
Thank you. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience at this time? Mr. Feller?
Ron Feller, Three Burke Dale Court, West Aiken. I am a fan of Hitchcock Woods. I've been here over 40 years, and I've used it as both a pedestrian and an equestrian. My concern is process, the process we're using to accomplish the goals. And my concerns arise out of the report that was just issued. In that report, it states the goal is back to pre-development. That's the stated goal for this work. Secondly, I think you should know, and your consultant here, I'm sure, would like to argue this point, but hydrology and soil mechanics are inexact science. They're not exact sciences. So basically, what you need to understand is the predictions in your report might happen and they may not, because of a lot of variables that are involved in these two sciences. There are just a very, a lot of variables that go on, and so making predictions in them is hard to do. Now, the first goal of the report was to handle the two-year flood. And as I understand the report, the estimate on that is $25 million. Whether that's a good estimate or not, I don't know. The second goal of the report is a 10-year flood, and the report states that double that story will be required for it. No estimate, no design do I see for that. So don't know where that's going. There's discussion of recovery of the eroded area in the woods, but no design or no estimate for that. So this is all involved in this total picture that we're talking about here. You're just beginning down that, well, you've been on it for quite a while, but, so, back to redevelopment, pre-development, it's not defined. I don't know what that means, and I think that's something, in other words, what's the goal of this total effort is one thing I would like to see the process defined as you go into this thing. That doesn't mean you shouldn't start where you're starting, but know where you're going in this, with this whole process. There's a multitude of responsible people, and I only see the city at the table with funds in hand. My recommendation is that you get everybody to the table that's involved with this with funds in hand, define what the end result is, and then proceed on that basis. Because right now, you have a start, but I don't know if you have a process to get you to the end.
Thank you, Mr. Feller. Any other comments from the audience? Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Hello. I don't need this microphone, but I'll speak into it anyway. My name is Laura Bagwell. I don't live in the city of Aiken, but I ride a horse in Hitchcock Woods and I walk in Hitchcock Woods. And I am an about-to-be geologist, I'm about to be a retired geologist from the Savannah Riverside. I have had a chance to look at the best management practices and the range of solutions that McCormick-Taylor has prepared for us. I respect Mr. Feller's observations, to which I would say, the city of Aiken is uniquely poised, as far as I can tell, for the last 25 years that I've lived here. We have never been at a nexus where we are right now with funding that has already been set aside, with an awareness of the extent of the problem, look at the people in this room, and with a very old and established firm that has brought to us a series of very workable solutions. We cannot, and we must not, let the perfect be the enemy of the very good. This is a very good point in time and a very good set of solutions that has been presented to us. Is it perfect? Probably not. But it was referenced that the models and the estimates are an inexact science. So too is a continued neglect and just blindly dumping water into Hitchcock Woods. That is very inexact, and it's also inexcusable. And we must not do nothing. Where I come from, where I work, we always evaluate the do-nothing alternative, and I think we all know what will happen if we do nothing. We're going to continue to kick the can down the road, and we'll be here two years from now, five years from now, and the price then, if it's McCormick-Taylor or if it's anybody else, will certainly be much higher, because the damage will be much, much greater by that time. So we must not do nothing. We cannot let, we cannot say, it's not perfect yet, so we're not going to do anything. We must not let the perfect be the enemy of a very, very good solution. Thank you. Thank you for hearing me, and thanks to all these folks who share our collective concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have anything to add that hasn't been said already at this point? Okay. Comments from council? Yeah, I know you made some comments earlier.
Yeah, I would just like to add, I've had extensive conversation with Corey over the last week, and I'm kind of a newbie to this, being just put on council, so I'm kind of like the kicker going in at the kickoff here and trying to get caught up on speed. And they've been very gracious and brought me up to speed on this. And I agree with our last speaker, this is, may not be the perfect, but I think it's the best solution we've had in the last 20 or 30 years that I've seen, my time on planning commission and everything else. So I think we're headed down the right road, and I think it's something we should do.
Thank you, council. Any other comments?
Yeah, let me make a comment. I am going to vote for it. I voted for everything for the Hitchcock Woods since I've been on council for 10 years. But I think people need to understand that this is the only money available to do with the woods. There's obviously a sense that we should spend it now, and that's fine. If you've read the report, the city is only minor, has only a minor responsibility for remediation of the stormwater going into the city. There's, I don't know how many sections this plan was in, about 19, more than 19 actually, and in not one is the city have more than 50% responsibility. I would like to see the Hitchcock Woods Foundation go to the county and go to the state and ask them to provide their fair share. The concern I've always had is if we spend our money, everybody's going to say, well, it's the city's responsibility, and they're going to have to come up with the $20 million, which is not fair to the city. So I'll support this effort, and hopefully, Mrs. Corey is right, in the sense that we'll be able to get some grant money to further the development. But the county and the state need to pony up, and I think somehow, the foundation should ask them as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman DuAll.
I have a statement, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to thank all of you for being here and for your interest in the erosion that's taken place. I know that it's been longstanding with your interest. And let me just add, Pat, I want to thank you for your effort and your partner next to you, who've been very great champions of this effort, and especially in bringing us up to speed in terms of what's going on, and McCormick for his efforts too. I've been with this project for a long time, and it has never been the city, or the city council's intent to do nothing. We wrestle for some time as to what to do, and our local option sales tax is on the ballot, and most of you out there, I would say, voted to allocate funds for that. And so the money we're spending right now is part of the local option sales tax, of which you voted for, and you said you wanted the monies to go towards this effort. So it's already there for you. The question is later, what do we do? And that is the big question, that we're going to need all of your help, your advice, your support, depending on where these funds take us with the erosion issues that's taking place. So I want to thank you for your interest. We want to get this solved, as much as you want to get it resolved, but it's going to take some, a lot of discussion in terms of where the other revenue comes from if we can't get the grants that we're expecting. So thank you again.
Thank you, Councilwoman Price. All right, hearing no further comments? All those in favor?
I just need a clarification on, and I'm totally for this particular initiative. Thank you for presenting everything to us the way you did, because it really opened up the opportunity that this can, and how it can infect not only the foundation, Hitchcock Woods, but the city of Aiken and our community as a whole. So I wanted to make that point. But also, I have a question for, maybe for McCormick and Taylor, and it was on the numbers. Just real quick, just clarification for me, I'll make it real quick. I know that the $5.2 million that was set aside based on what was done in the past, I was given an $11.5 million total figure, and I'm not sure if that is based on phases three or four, just need clarification on that. I know the $5.2 is for the first two phases. Can you add to that?
Yes, Jason, by the way, this is Jason Hetrick. Welcome, Jason, from McCormick-Taylor.
Thanks.
I'm just trying to get in my head around that particular revenue number, I'm not sure where it fits in.
Phases one and two is roughly about $5.2 million combined. The $11.2, that might be phases one through three, and then phase four is $10 million of our conservative construction estimate at this time.
So phase four, $10 million in addition.
The total price for all four phases was roughly $20 to $25 million, depending on the solutions that we move forward with. We presented several alternatives for several sites, so there's a varying price component to those.
And I'm just trying to figure out where this $11.5 million figure came from, but I think it's important for our community to know the total cost of this, obviously, with the contingencies, because you guys worked in contingencies, so I've got that not a problem, but the $11.5 million, I was just trying to figure out what part of the phases that falls into.
I'm not sure where that number came from. Phases one and two summed together about $5.5 million. Package three is $8 million, and package four is $7.3 million.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. And I would like to say to Pat and Joanne Sampson is the other person who kept us so informed. Thank you for your diligence and to everyone on the foundation's board for keeping us informed and working with us on this. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's going to be an exodus. They get to watch the ballgame.[1411.83] They get to watch the ballgame.
Congratulations.
And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame.
Congratulations.
And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame. Congratulations. And I expect at this time, there's gonna be an Exodus. They get to watch the ballgame.[526.84]
A selling price of $5,900.
Very good. Any comments from the audience? Counsel?
Yeah, why are we taking the money out of the public safety building account? Don't we have an item in CPST for land acquisition?
Yes, we could take it out of that.
I'd rather do that. I mean, I don't know how many opportunities we're going to have to use that fund.
I think the chief would appreciate that.
So Gary, is that just a...
Gary, can we...
Are you making that in the form of an amendment to the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
And is that accepted?
Yes. Well, I didn't make the motion. I'm just saying yes, I agree with Dick.
I made the motion, yes.
The motion and the second all...
You accept the amendment.
I accept the amendment.
And who seconded?
I did.
And you accept...
Very good.
The amendment?
All right. All those in favor as amended? And that's unanimous, thank you. Number six under new business, and I'm going to recognize Councilman Walts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a resolution to authorize the acceptance of a Bridle Path property for Biddy Jane McDonald, Leanne Kavanaugh, and Sharon Lynn McDonald. This piece of property is at the end of Grace Circle, and anybody who's gone into the woods by going down there has walked on this piece of property. And I'll be the first to say I've walked on it numerous times and never thought about ownership of it. So this is a good way to clean a little bit of this up and great for this family who's been in Aiken for years to donate this. They have come together from Georgia, New Mexico, and South Carolina to sign off on this. So this is a great thing, and I recommend that we accept this.
Very good, we accept that motion?
You are.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Couldn't we have a second? Comments from staff?
I can't add anything further other than to join Councilmember Walts in thanking the present owners of the property for their public spiritness and their willingness to donate this to the city of Aiken.
Thank Lee.
Thank you.
Any comments from the audience? Other comments from council?
Again, thank you very much to the McDonald family and Fred and Leah, nice to see you here.
Very good. All those in favor? And of course, that's unanimous, thank you.
We don't want that to be the only reason you all come to visit us sometimes.
The cookie lady came too, so maybe you brought her also, so...
We could have those seats reserved for you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on down, new business, number cited, item seven. This is approval of resolution to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Aiken County and SE Aiken LLC regarding redevelopment of the Aiken Mall. And by title, a resolution authorizing the city of Aiken to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Aiken County, South Carolina, and SE Aiken LLC in connection with the redevelopment of Aiken Mall. Is there a motion?
So move.
We have a motion and a second? Very good. Comments from staff?
Mr. Mayor, as part of the redevelopment of the Aiken Mall, the owner, the city of Aiken and Aiken County have all developed a resolution for each party's consideration. Aiken County would create a multi-county business park and provide special source revenue credits to the developer, which would defray some costs related to the development. The city would purchase for a million dollars a portion of this property to be used as a park. The city would be reimbursed their million-dollar purchase price plus up to an amount of interest to $250,000. The source of funds would be a combination of economic reinvestment funds, $200,000, transportation and public safety funds, $400,000, and hospitality tax funds, $400,000. So for council consideration, it's a resolution authorizing the city of Aiken to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Aiken County, South Carolina, and the Southeast SE Aiken LLC in connection with the redevelopment of the Aiken Mall. Now, as you know, there's been many months of negotiations, and we have our attorney that has represented the city, Attorney Gary Pope, present this evening, that wanted to give a very brief summary and then answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as City Manager Clem mentioned just a moment ago, this has been the result of approximately, I don't know, one to two-year process at this point, and much negotiation with the county and with Southeast Aiken LLC. The documents before you tonight will allow for the city's consent to the creation of the park. They memorialize the intent of the city and the county for the special source revenue credits that will provide for enhanced infrastructure at the project to include a public park, and will also contemplate the million-dollar purchase of the land ringing the park. As Mr. Clem also noted, the documents very happily provide for the reimbursement to the city of its expenditure of the $1 million for the park following the completion of the special source revenue credits. The first item before you is the resolution adopting the memorandum of understanding. The next item on the agenda is first reading of an ordinance, which is the definitive agreement that sets forth the binding obligations between the various parties. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding these documents.
Who monitors all of the financial aspects of this? How much has been paid and how much so forth?
So in the multi-county park context, the county is the entity that establishes the park. Their partner county is Edgefield, but Aiken County will be the entity that will be supervising the collection of the filo payments from SE Aiken LLC. And under these documents, they are required to provide a report to the city, and given that, the special source revenue credits will be set at an amount that is necessary for the reimbursement of the improvements plus any borrowing cost of the developer, not of the city or the county, but of the developer in taking care of these improvements, the developer is required to provide a schedule of payments that they have negotiated with their lender to both the city and the county so that everyone will have a transparent view of how and when things are being paid.
How often are these reports required?
The report for the debt service would be required anytime that SE Aiken LLC entered into a new financing agreement, but the annual report, I believe it would be annually.
Okay, so we'll... Okay.
The agreement provides that the payments will be annually, so there would be a notification requirement.
And did you discuss the reporting requirements to the county?
They have been discussed with the county, and the county is in agreement.
Okay. Council happy once a year?
Thank you, Gary. Any other comments from the audience? We would like to just acknowledge that Vic Mills, President of Southeastern, is here with us today. Vic, thank you for being here tonight. Other comments from council?
I just would want to say this appears to be a very complicated process, but after having studied it and listened to a few briefings tonight, I just am convinced it's clearly, very clearly, in the best interest of the city to support this item. There's no question the city's going to benefit significantly from the development of the mall, and I want to thank everybody that's involved. Gary, Mr. Mills, is he still here? Thank you, sir. But I think it's a good move.
Thank you, Councilman Duarte. All those in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Number eight, under new business, this is first reading of an ordinance to enter into an agreement with Aiken County and SE Aiken LLC regarding redevelopment of Aiken Mall. Is there a motion?
I so moved.
Senator?
Motion and second. Comments from staff?
Mr. Mayor, as Attorney Pope mentioned, the first was a resolution, and this is actually the first reading of the actual ordinance to accomplish this. Split into two sections. One is a special source credit and incentive agreement, which will allow for the allocation of pilot generated from the improvements at the Aiken Mall, along with the purchase of a portion of recreational property. And two, a purchase and sales agreement for the above-mentioned recreational portion of the mall property for a million dollars. So this is the actual ordinance to accomplish that.
Very good. Any comments from the audience? Comments from council? All those in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Moving down to that portion of our agenda, petitions and requests. Number one, this is a resolution supporting and encouraging Department of Energy, National Nuclear Security Administration to locate the plutonium pit production mission at the Savannah River Site. Is there a motion? Did I forget? Just go back.
We skipped one.
I was... I had my mind on a championship game, I'm sorry.
I don't think we got a score yet.
This is the first reading of an ordinance to annex a portion of Columbia Highway North, US Highway 1, and the city of Aiken Northside Park. Is there a motion?
I so moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Comments from staff?
Mr. Mayor, you have asked that the city council consider annexation of the portion of US Highway 1 right-of-way from Aldrich Street Northeast to Crosland, at Crosland Park, in a northerly direction to Duke Drive, and also the property owned by the city of Aiken containing 103.14 acres known as the Northside Park. The city would annex the Northside Park property in the right-of-way from Crosland Park to Duke Drive to allow the city of Aiken to be able to provide public safety services, including traffic safety and traffic accident response, and the right-of-way from Crosland Park to Duke Drive and in Northside Park. Since the planning commission must make a recommendation to council for annexations and rezoning of properties, the request is for the city council to consider the request for annexation and zoning on first reading, and then to refer the request to the planning commission for their review. So for city council consideration, it's first reading of an ordinance to annex the portion of Columbia Highway from Crosland Park to Duke Drive, and annex the city property known as Northside Park containing about 103 acres, and zone the park as residential single-family RS-15, and refer the annexation request to the planning commission for a recommendation.
Very good. Comments from the audience? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm James Cook, the resident of the corridor along the north side across the road from the development of the Northside Park. Where our neighbors and myself were fully supportive of the park and what it's doing for the needs for the North of Aiken, and also as well as the citizens of Aiken as a whole. It's long needed, it's desperately overdue, and I applaud you for that. Have one question regarding the right-of-way of US 1. Is there any intent to bring the businesses and residences along that corridor into the city, or is it strictly just the road and the right-of-way of the road?
I can address that, Mr. Cook. I'm the one who requested this, and frankly, this request is entirely on the public safety at the park. That's why I brought it forward. It's because it's a city park. If there's an issue on that, public safety is going to be... will have to be called out, the 911 services. And I think it needs to be in the city. It's not a power grab or take. I would hope that those businesses one day would... Maybe we could work out something where they might want to come into the city when we have utilities and those other things, but that's not the purpose of this.
All right. Can I answer my question?
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. Let me answer your question a different way. If you're contiguous to that park and you sell, you're going to have to come into the city. So it needs to... It depends on what the planning commission is going to recommend.
Right.
As far as I can see, our ordinance requiring property sold, if it's contiguous, has to come into the city.
If it has water.
If we don't have services... But we don't have services out there.
If your address is Columbia Highway, then you would sell the property, it would be city property to be recognized being in the city. Is that what I understand?
If you have city water.
Do you have city water?
I'm not on... I'm on Shaw's Crest Drive. I have city water, but I'm not on the road itself. I'm actually not on Columbia Highway. Shaw's Crest Drive, Rogers Road, all that address are... They're not... They actually don't butt up to the right-of-way for US 1. We're on a county road.
Mr. Cook?
Have public access. You don't have access to city water.
I've had city water forever, yeah.
You have city water, then he's not adjacent, though.
If you're not contiguous, you don't have a problem, but if you're contiguous to the park, then...
Continuous meaning adjacent.
Right next to it, touching it.
Okay. All right. Can you answer my question?
But Mr. Cook, I'd be happy to sit down with you with our staff and look at a map so to answer that question fully, I mean.
Okay.
But no, the intention is certainly for the park. Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Comments from council?
Just a quick question. Northside Park consisting of 103 acres, and we're requesting it be zoned as residential single-family.
Right.
Can somebody clarify that?
I'm going to ask Ryan Blain, our planning director, to address that.
Brian, I'm sure it's something I don't know.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, city council. Governmental uses are allowed in virtually any zone district in which this counts. Citizens Park is zoned RS-15, as well as a number of other parks in town. It seems to be our policy that that is what has been the zone district used when zoning larger park facilities, just to be consistent with what we've done in the past.
So in other words, when a parcel becomes part of the city, it has to have some zoning designation?
Correct, yes.
And that's just what we've chosen as a city, basically?
Traditionally, correct, yes.
I noticed that too. Thank you, Andrea. Good question. Thank you, Ryan.
To go back and address what Mr. Cook was talking about, they don't have sewer on the other side of the road would be the difference. So we can't annex. We wouldn't be bringing that to them.
Well, I think it's a valid question, and I think as they come up, we definitely want to answer them, Councilman Duarte.
The planning commission should deal with that one when they discuss it.
Absolutely.
They do a comprehensive...
Infrastructure's not there. And it's needed, but it's not there.
So the...
Give it a story.
The dirty story.
So as Mr. Clem stated, so this process... This will send it to planning, which will have public hearing and another opportunity to review it before it comes back to us for second reading, so... All those in favor on first reading? That's unanimous, thank you. Now can I move to petitions and requests? Number one, under petitions and requests, this is a resolution supporting and encouraging the Department of Energy, National Nuclear Security Administration to locate the plutonium pit production mission at the Savannah River Site. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Motion is our second?
I second.
And a second? Comments from staff? I've got it, absolutely. There's been a group working, and this is an economic development initiative also, but also future site for our largest employer, obviously, is Savannah River Site. We have some people here who can speak more on this, but under the leadership of Chairman Bunker at the county, we've been working and encouraged to show support locally for future missions at the site. This is an NSA mission. It's different than the EM. It would provide roughly 800 long-term jobs at the site, and would initially be a multi-billion dollar investment to the site in this mission. So we've been asked and want to participate in showing support to our congressional delegation, who will then be moving to include this in the F-19 budget. And there's other people right now. Pit production is in New Mexico. They're working very hard to keep it there, although they haven't produced anything since 2011. And we think there's an opportunity at our site. We've been serving the needs for, you know, for national security for over six decades out there. I think we're uniquely qualified for it. I know we have people here who can speak much more to this than I can, but I think this is a positive resolution. The county will actually have the same resolution on their agenda tomorrow night, and then we will put it in a package to submit to our congressional delegation just to show them the local support and belief in the workforce that we have at the site. So with that, I would certainly open it up. Two comments from our audience? Yes, sir. Admiral, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Charles Muns, citizen of Aiken, and I'm talking just as a citizen here tonight, city council and Mr. Mayor. I would like to talk in favor of the resolution. I think it is a forward-thinking resolution, and it fits the needs of our area. Many... And so I'd like to make three points: jobs, the need for the pits, and third, why Savannah River Site. Jobs, many of you have advocated just in today's paper that your goal for this year is jobs. I can think of no better job than these types of jobs. They'll be highly technical, high-paying, and clearly what we would want in this community. Second, the need. I'm an advisor to a Secretary of Defense Advisory Board, and I can tell you, there is a... Without us owing our nuclear deterrent, there will still be a need for us to have to refurbish pits and manufacture pits. This goes to the heart of the credibility of our nuclear deterrent, and it's key to national security for the next 50 years. And lastly, why Savannah River Site? Well, it's... We have the... This is the kind of business it does. And we have the geology at the site that supports this kind of business. It's well-understood. We have the geography. There's a large area down there. It's perfect to be able to do this business. We have government structures like yourselves that support this kind of work, and that's important. We have safety and security at the site better than none. As I left the site, we were the best from a safety standpoint in the entire nation. And these kind of Department of Energy sites are 10 times better than their peers in industry. So we have the safety and security. And lastly, maybe most importantly, we have the people, the culture of the people to be able to do nuclear work. So for all those reasons, I support and would advocate that you pass this resolution.
Thank you, Chuck. Appreciate that. Any other comments from the audience?
Mr. Mayor, I think I'm going to put him on the spot here, Dr. Makovsky. We have three new council members, and you've been before council before. You stated in this resolution, so just if you don't mind, come forward and just give a little sentence or two as to the role of the lab with this.
Terry, good evening.
And Terry, you can beat me up later.
For those who don't know, Terry is the director of the National...
Of the National Lab at Savannah River Site.
Mr. Mayor, council.
Good evening.
Thank you for inviting me up here. I think I would, you know, echo the comments that you've already heard on this. It's an extremely important mission for the security of our nation, probably one of the most important, and you just have to read the headlines in the papers to understand how much... How important it is and... But I would really focus here on the quality of the workforce that we have. I think that is the differentiator, and, you know, we must be successful at this mission. There is no question about that. And in order to do that, we need people who are highly trained and can operate these kinds of facilities in a safe and secure manner. And there's no question that this site, over the 60-plus years of its operation, have demonstrated that capability. So I think it is an important opportunity for this site, for our people, to continue to display and accomplish the kind of work that they have in the past, but going forward to help our nation be successful in addressing these challenges. From the point of view of the National Laboratory, it is a... These are highly technical requirements to be successful at this. And what we have been able to demonstrate on the site is the combination of the manufacturing workforce with the science and technology the lab has provided an unprecedented capability that we now have the opportunity to apply to this very important mission going forward. So it's a combination of the science, technology that we've demonstrated, but really, the heart of it is that we have the nuclear-trained workforce, and this is an important opportunity to really serve the nation in a continuing way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I'll just say that I know we have Rick McLeod, who's with the Community Reuse Organization. Rick, thank you for being here. I'm certain in support of this, as well as Jim Mear, with Citizens for Nuclear Technology. Appreciate you being here also. Any other comments from the audience?
We don't want to forget Teresa.
Teresa. Teresa, appreciate all your help and support also. I'll open up to council, and I know there may be some questions that these individuals might get answered, so certainly open up for council for comments or questions at this time.
Yeah, and I'll make it brief. Thank you guys for coming. The resolution was put before us, and I am 150% in favor of the opportunity, the economic growth, the cultivation, and the addressing of our waste product out there, of course. I think the sky's the limit when it comes to that opportunity. What I would like to see in addition to this resolution is a little bit more detailed safety plan, just a document, could be an outline for the community. I think we spoke to the safety and the track record in the last 60 years, but it's additional nuclear waste coming into our community, and I know for a fact there's a lot of citizens out there that worry about that. So having an outline of a safety plan in addition to this, I think, would go a long way.
Very good. Would anyone care to address...
Well, I would suspect that there's a very strong safety program out there.
And I've actually been exposed to your safety program in contracts and stuff that I've reviewed. But this would... I guess my point would be, you know, a 100-page contract to the community is... Would be somewhat irrelevant to them, but a brief synopsis of a safety approach to this new waste coming into the city and how it would be handled, how it's been affected, so forth and so on, I think would go a long way.
Good afternoon or evening, or just after evening, Mr. Mayor, council. One thing you got to realize, the resolution is just saying we'd like to be considered to host this facility. Right now, we're in the running with... It could stay at New Mexico, Idaho, Falls is another location, and our location. So there's been no decision made that it would go anywhere yet. As Admiral Muns was saying, the nation needs at least 50 to 80 pits production right now to maintain the nuclear arsenal. That's what we're looking at, is a national security need. Before or after the decision would be made, there would be plenty of multiple volumes of safety plans to make sure this effort would come. This is also a fairly new skill set that we don't have at Savannah River Site in working metallurgy. This is a huge metallurgy project, actually. But we also have the actinide chemistry at the site, which matches up with that, and that's why we're being considered as a potential site. So there is no decision made. Your resolution is just saying we'd like to be considered. We've been a safe site for 60 years. We don't see that process changing, so it's really... Your resolution is just raising your hand up and saying we'd like to be considered. New Mexico, actually, their senators have come out against moving it and have been against, actually, the analysis being performed. So you're actually making a stand, again, just to be considered for the site. So the safety will come a lot later, even if we're selected. But right now, it's premature to even ask for a safety plan or even consideration.
Thank you, Rick. Or Jim? Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Jim Mear. I'm the Executive Director of Citizens for Nuclear Technology Awareness. Just as a quick comment and clarification on the waste issue, this will not be generating or bringing in waste to our state. So it will not be bringing in any new high-level waste. Any waste that is generating, we are taking a product and making a product to be used and transferred out into the field. Any waste that is generated will be very minor and actually will be handled as transuranic waste, which we have a clear disposition path for right now, going to the Waste Isolation Pilot Plan in New Mexico. So from a waste perspective, and especially a high-level waste perspective, we need to delineate that that's not going to be an issue with us, okay?
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you for that. Good clarification. All right. Those in favor of the resolution in front of council at this time? And that's unanimous, thank you. Moving down to information, issues and updates?
I'd just like to simply state, Mr. Mayor, about how proud I am of the men and women that call themselves city workers. You know, there are folks in the city of Aiken that are in need, and we participated this year in the United Way campaign, and our employees contributed over $12,262.
I would just like to say January 20th... I would, I would just like to say, January 20th, there's going to be a little basketball game in town. Battle of the badges, the Aiken sirens with two members up here, including myself and Councilman Gerdo are, are playing in. Ed's got two weeks to work on his jump shot. We're counting on you, Ed.
That's all?
Raising.
Just a shot, Ed.
This is an opportunity, opportunity for our community to support the effort to build a wall, obviously, to, to recognize our fallen officers and show honor to them, our new public safety building. It's a great, great event. It had, we had one of the members from the Harlem Wizards in town today, Rocket, and he had some moves. I didn't show him everything I had, though, Ed, so we're going to be all right.
Great, great.
Hope people will, I hope everyone will try to come out and support that. It's going to be a great event for a good cause, and it should be very entertaining.
And where is this?
At USC Aiken.
In what time?
The game tip-off is 6:30.
Is it free?
Gates open at 4:30. It's not, it's not free. It's very affordable. I think our tickets are, I have $12, $12, is that correct?
$12 per student, 18 per adult, if you buy locally, about my amount, or 15.
So that's $12, $12 for students, 18 for adults. I'll say we went to East Aiken, Meat Hall, and I know there was one other school, Horse Creek, that I didn't get to go to today, but the kids were just mesmerized by my moves. Now Rocket, he did. I know, I know, if you had 8:30 on the over-under, you did. Congratulations, you won the pool. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in.[1778.83]